Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners's public hearing regarding the 2025 to 2030 capital improvement program. It's 3:31 PM. My name is Ty Mansur, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mihia. To my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus and Commissioner Rachel Grant is present virtually. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, our Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings, Jennifer Walker, and various other staff members related to this topic. The purpose is to accept and consider public comment related to our capital improvement program, and this public hearing is now open. So Ashley Arai, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, will present information on the topic and any additional information requested by the Board. After her presentation, anyone wishing to testify will have three minutes to make comment or ask questions. Officer or department representative may answer your questions after testimony is complete or may indicate they're going to respond at a later point directly. Those in person will be called to testify first than those online. Time may not be given to another person, and when you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. Let's think the preliminary. Got some time to Ashley.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just a little overview of the capital improvements plan. The state does require us to adopt a financing plan for the county's public facilities. The capital improvements plan is included as an appendix to the comprehensive plan and fulfills our requirements under the Growth Management Act. This slide here summarizes the estimated capital expenditures across all funds as they apply to these different line items. The estimates are subject to change as the respective projects get further developed. As was mentioned, the CIP is included as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. With the adoption of the new comprehensive plan on December 16th, we will transition to biannual updates. Right now, we're in an annual update cycle. By planning for our public facilities or capital facilities, departments are better able to prioritize our projects, coordinate related efforts, and successfully pursue loan and grant opportunities for the projects contained therein. The process to date, the Planning Commission has reviewed the proposed capital improvements plan and held a public hearing on it this past summer. Another public hearing on the CIP was held with the Board in combination with the comprehensive plan on November 4th. No public comments were received at the November 4th hearing. Additionally, an e-brief was sent to the Board on October 14th, and this e-brief highlighted the new public dashboards that Public Works and Central Services have put together that offer more detailed information on the county's capital projects. To date, since the Planning Commission's review, we've received only two written comments. Both of those were related to stream flow and groundwater monitoring in the Deschutes watershed. These topics do fall outside the scope of the CIP, but I do want to reassure you that the comprehensive plan contains several other policies that address water resource planning and monitoring. And that concludes my remarks.
You press the glass. Okay, thank you. And we'll go to public comment. Mr. Pettit, you're up.
My name's John Pettit. I'm from Rich Road, East Olympia. Capital Improvement Program. You know, I appreciated the fact that Ashley had mentioned that this is an important integral part of the comprehensive plan, meaning, of course, that it creates obligation to follow the comprehensive plan, state law, and such. The Planning Commission did not choose to make any recommendation regarding the current capital improvement program that I'm aware of. Ashley can certainly clear that question up. One of the elements that while I may be in complete disagreement on certain things that historically the county appears to be going forward with, one of the aspects that is always concern is that color of money. And for the expenditure of REIT I, funds, it requires that whatever project there would be, would be identified in the capital facility plan. Now, I'm making a special note to that because many years ago, obviously, we were going to look at fixing the courthouse up. It's probably gone, okay? But I want to also point out that there is no, no mention of either the atrium, this property right here that we've spent REIT money on, and there's certainly no mention of the Plum Street property on the site. So therefore, you could not use REIT money to make bond payments on a project that wouldn't be in that location. Grabbing the REIT money out of the bonds that are supported by REIT out of one purpose and repurposing it for something that doesn't meet the criteria clearly, clearly would be forbidden. And so I'm okay with you going to approve this, this program. But I also want to request that you would live by accordingly. And when there's a question regarding REIT and using funds, you might go ahead and check back with Ashley. I'm sure she's well familiar with that, about whether REIT funds can be used in making payments on something not listed in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is no one else in the boardroom? Anyone online for public comment on the capital improvement program? Okay.
Chair.
Commissioner Klaus.
It sounded like there was a question toward the beginning of Mr. Pettit's comments that maybe would warrant a follow-up related to whether the Planning Commission made recommendations to the CIP.
I think we talked that through at length, and it's probably, it's been put to bed multiple times, but it's not.
Right, but for the purposes of this public hearing, isn't that why folks can come common is to talk, ask questions about?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, it, it's funny, just how things, the same question, even though it's answered a million times, it keeps getting asked again, but you're, you're right. It can easily be answered again. You're asking Ashley.
It sounded like Mr. Pettit asked Ashley. I took a note of it in the beginning of the comment, but I know it's optional for responsibly.
We don't mind responding. Ashley's here, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So the Planning Commission recommended that the Board consider adopting the new CIP once the public dashboards were published. And so they have been published, and they're available, so their recommendation would be to move forward with the new CIP as reflected in the updated comprehensive plan.
I think just for context, Ashley, with our attorneys and the Planning Commission, working on an approach that provides a level of clarity and even flexibility so that there isn't this confusion about the specific nature of certain things, it would really preclude the county from capitalizing and being advantageous towards new projects that pop up. So I think she's making good progress on that.
But just for clarification, the, the CIP is not necessarily the purview of the Planning Commission. That is a board decision, and we can get recommendations or advice from the Planning Commission on it, just like the rest of the com-plan or anything else.
Yeah, I think you're hitting the, the nail on the head of how the county has used this historically, the tool, and the fact that it does create a little bit of confusion as to what the purview or authority, it really is the Board of County Commissioners's authority over making acquisitions for county facilities. The way in which state, I think it's code, state code has described it, and the way the county has interpreted that previously, has created a very specific list, and that's what Ashley's been working with, our legal team, to have an understanding that it doesn't have to be that specific. And so that's really what understands some of the Planning Commissioners wanted, is for it to be more in line with what their authority was, rather than it being something that is so specific that they don't really have authority because it's going to come to the Board anyways.
And then as far as past purchases and language in our capital improvement plan that says what we will and won't do, there, there is nothing we've done that is in violation to anything in our CIP regarding purchasing the new property that we've purchased. So that, that kind of repeated rhetoric is, is also a misunderstanding is, is what I remember reading from our prosecuting attorney's office.
That's correct. Because there is language that identifies the Board's intent to address its space and facilities needs, and that it was so, it was both public and advertised about the decisions the Board made to take out the bond, et cetera, they felt very comfortable that that fell within the spirit of what the Board was trying to accomplish.
The legal review happened in August of 2025 to ensure that we were all following the appropriate process.
Right.
And we've sent that notice out, we've sent that out to the members of the public that have concerns multiple times, I believe.
Yeah, any folks that have reached out, we, I believe there has been responses. You can always check with the clerk, though. We're going off of memory at this point.
Okay, so there's no other public comment, then I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing and discussion. Hearing now no call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, then we are adjourned until 4:00 PM, which will be a continuation. We're technically in recess from the morning's hearings. We had a couple, actually three separate self-contained public hearings, but we will conclude the morning's public hearing at 4:00 PM where we will entertain public comment on any piece of the 26, 27 Baniel budget. So until then, we're adjourned. So until then, we're adjourned. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' public hearing regarding the 2627 BNIOL budget. We are, we recessed, uh, earlier in the afternoon and then took a couple of discreet public hearings. And now we're concluding the morning and early afternoon public hearings regarding the budget in, in its totality. Uh, this session is kind of a catch-all for all the different pieces for folks who didn't get a chance to attend the specific session. The purpose is to reconvene and accept and consider public comment on, uh, any topic related to the 2627 BNIOL budget. So the hearing remains open. Commissioners remain present, all present as before, as well as staff. So, uh, I won't redo the advisements regarding public comment. You'll have three minutes to either comment or ask questions. You may get, um, a response directly from an officer department representative or, um, you may get a follow-up. Folks will be called closing person and then those online. And time may not be donated to other speakers. When you are called on, please state your name and address or area of the county which reside for the record. So, uh, I don't know that there's any introductory. I looked to the county manager, budget manager. Was there any, nothing up front? Just call for any public comment.
Right, chair, we don't have anything else to cover.
Had it signed up, so we'll start with him.
Good afternoon. My name is John Pettit. I'm from Rich Road area, East Olympia. So to conclude, started to spend a long day. And we started out with a lot of different offices and departments. And, you know, the, uh, my primary interest is in elected offices that have an assignment of a job to do. Their assignment of a job to do also involves a personal financial responsibility if they end up having or spending money that's not in the budget. You know, you can have money in a budget. It doesn't mean you have to spend it. On the other hand, you can't spend any money unless it has been put in the budget. The county is well aware of, uh, money coming back into the funds. And, and quite honestly, the budget that we were presented, there's no record of any amount of funds. I don't know how you really do a budget without having the funds to know whether you're going to draw down or if you're going to build up or what exactly. That's one of the considerations you might be looking at. But I think the significant part is also is you're also aware that currently the county is subject to, uh, discomfort by, uh, certain people, not me in particular, uh, wanting to sue the county for not providing, uh, adequate service in the clerk's department or I should say office. It would be prudent, and I mentioned it earlier, that you set your, readjust your budget so that you are roughly 105% of the 2025 level. And then an additional 3% on top of that for the 2027 portion. So there's 26 and 27. And that, that would accommodate and allow people to have what would be a potentially acceptable amount for a budget. At the same time, I've looked at these budgets and I see considerable extra money added to the cost for, uh, issues that the offices have nothing to do with. They don't decide internal costs or charges, fees. I think it's appropriate to support the elected for being able to do the job, support the courts, get the, help us get our protection that we get from those sources. So with that, um, I wish you all the best and I do hope that, uh, you can find a way to make sure that you aren't going to force another elected office actually take a legal action against the county commissioners in order to receive proper support. Thank you.
Okay, no, uh, particular question there, no otherbody else in the room? Anyone online who is here to provide public comment on the board? Only once, going twice. And it looks like we have wrapped it up. Okay, so thanks, everybody who is here gave comment. Thanks to our elected and department heads for responding to questions. And with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing, any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Let's see everybody back tomorrow at 9:00 AM.